Pain in the neck.
Okay, we're recording now.
Alrighty.
Good morning, everybody. I see Dr. Hooker and Mrs. Johnston are both online, so I'll put you down as both available on the roll call. And under your work session for today, for the operations committee, we have two items. We wanted to get an update from Mr. Brad Moats of Moats Engineering on the energy performance contract. And then the second will be safety planning for the opening of schools in 2020, 2021 school year. So with that, Brad, could you start us off then with an update on the energy performance contract?
Certainly. Thank you, Mick, and good morning, board members and the administrative team at Indian Hill. Just a brief update. So in June, we received four quotations from the bidders that we had invited to give us formal proposals. If you recall, we had nine originally. Things were delayed a little bit with COVID. And so we had narrowed it to four groups who submitted. And from those four groups, we felt that two of the bids were very comparable. And so we requested additional pricing from them. So for instance, in June, we received quotations on seven initiatives. On July 31st, we received 20 proposals. So we, in essence, we redid the original seven, but we added 13 items. And these 13 items frankly came from ideas from all of the vendors. So if we saw a good idea, an instance would be controlling the heat for the radiators at the transportation building for the buses that had a very good payback. One of the vendors had recommended that. So where we saw good initiatives with good paybacks, we added them on to the scope and priced them separately with the goal being to try to get apples and apples numbers. So we have received these final proposals from these two vendors for the 20 initiatives. I had a detailed conference call with Brewer Garrett on Friday afternoon. And I'm having one with Energy Optimizers later this morning. And then we'll, we're meeting with Nick and Jim and Ken tomorrow to kind of review our findings. I think either one of these companies would do a great job for the district. They do have different approaches. But you know, right now, we're just trying to get to the what we think is the best vendor for you. A couple of questions for the operations committee is, one, once we feel like we've have a good selection, we obviously will make that recommendation and share the pertinent information. But one thing I was wondering, if your group wants to meet or interview the prospective contractor before something formal is done?
I don't really want to meet them. I want you to meet them.
Well, we've been meeting with them since last October and as have Mick and Ken.
What was your comment just now? You said they have different approaches. That to me means there is a difference. And what's the different approaches? And why would we want one approach over the other?
Well, it's almost the culture of the organizations. And I don't want to, it's not a good or a bad culture. Brewer Garrett is very professional. And the folks from Energy Optimizers are kind of a get or done type of group. And I'm confident that both can do the projects, I believe. And Kirk Energy Optimizers lists you as a district that they had worked, or they had worked with you when you were with a prior district. But you know, both have a lot of experience with K-12, 60 or 70 projects each in the last five years for K-12 districts. So it's just-
How old are both companies?
Brewer Garrett is probably at least 50 years old. Energy Optimizers is not that old. It's, I can find out the answer to that. I don't know. But Energy Optimizers was recently purchased by Abagger Commercial Group here in Cincinnati, which to me helps, I mean, you know, I don't know, they're a multimillion dollar, maybe a billion dollar organization. So there's a lot of strength behind them. And they are local, even though Energy Optimizers is from Dayton, Brewer Garrett's from Cleveland. And so there's, there's distance issues that, you know, I think we should, that we'll discuss with Mick and Jim and Ken. But-
Well, to me, I don't need to get into the, you know, all of that. I just want you all to pick the right, the one that you think's the best. And it sounds like you have some reasons, some concerns with each company. So yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. It's, and then the other thing I wanted to mention moving forward.
Bless you.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that this will be a fluid process. In other words, so often when we've been involved with projects, it's kind of a design bid and build. And there's a very, very tight defined scope. And there's usually very minimal change orders. This project is really a design build. And so we've put kind of a criteria document out there. There will be more things that will change on this, but we will work to keep it in the context and in the framework of the original intent. But I just wanted to make you aware of it. They will find things that will potentially be additional energy savings that either we hadn't identified or they hadn't identified. And then we'll bring it up. And then as a team with Mick and Jim and Ken, it'll be decided, should we do it? Shouldn't we do it? And so forth.
But I just- What's the timeline? Because obviously, some of this stuff cannot be done with the kids in the school, especially in COVID era. Are they, what would be their timeline on that, on them working? And B, what is the timeline on getting them started?
Well, I believe your next board meeting is in September. Is that correct?
Yes.
So our goal would be to have things arranged so that it could go before that board meeting. And we would have the necessary legwork in place so that the contract could move forward fairly quickly after that. There's obviously options that are available with respect to financing, both through the state and other ways. And so that will be one of the next steps that will need to be done. So from a practical standpoint, if we have a recommendation in September, my hope would be that they start in October. And it's probably going to be, best case scenario, five or six months. Some of this work can happen second shift. There's some work that's chiller related. So that work frankly wants to happen in the wintertime. There's some work that's boiler related. Then that work would probably best happen in the spring. So it's probably going to be most of your next school year. But the contractors realize that we've got to focus on what's best for your school in terms of occupancy and so forth. And they've indicated a flexibility to work around your requirements.
Which company, which company is most capable of identifying additional energy savings?
I would honestly say Elizabeth, that they're equal. I think they're both attuned to this. They both do a lot of work in this field. And I don't, I don't think one is better than the other from that perspective.
And have you gotten any recommendations from previous jobs? Have you talked to any of them, any other districts that have had experience and have any concerns?
We talked with references last fall. And that will be something that we'll circle back with before we make a formal recommendation. But honestly, for the group of four that we shortlisted, everything that we heard back was very positive.
Thank you.
Eddie, Elizabeth, do you have any more questions for Brad at this time?
No, I mean, he's doing a great job.
Yeah, it sounds like you've got some hard decision to make. You know, it sounds like there's some concerns of being all the way from Cleveland, how well that will work. And then the other one you said may be a little more, I don't know, you didn't say they weren't professional, but you were concerned a little bit. So sort of that out.
We will do that. We've got, we've had a lot of great input from Mick and Ken thus far. And I'm sure Jim will add with that. Really what we're trying to do right now is pick the best for, the best group for the district. So I really don't think we can make a bad decision, but we want to make the best decision.
Jim, do you have any questions related to?
No, I think you guys asked the questions that be on my mind about how it would affect operations from the school standpoint. So I feel like you answered that.
Cool.
So just real quick, Brad, you feel you guys will be ready after the meetings and the follow-up to present a recommendation that we could have on our board agenda in September?
For sure.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for us, Brad?
No, I asked the one question and I kind of, I gave the, kind of the clarification on how this process will work. So I'm good.
All right. Well, thank you, Brad. You're welcome to stay for the committee meeting if you would like. If you would, you have some other things you need to get done. We understand that as well.
I'll check out, I'll get prepared for this nine o'clock call with Energy Optimizers. So everybody have a great day. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Have a great day.
Bye-bye.
So the next thing we wanted to talk about during this work session is the safety planning for the upcoming school year. As we go through that process, I just want to kind of give you an overview of what we've done so far. Throughout the summertime, we had started to do some things with the administrators as far as trying to come up with a plan of what each building needed, trying to figure out sizes of classrooms and how we would space, you know, get enough space for the students. And what we were finding is that was an incredible amount of work for our administrators to take on. And not exactly in their wheelhouse, so to speak, of what they're, you know, what they're trying to do and accomplish for the upcoming school year. So as a team, we made a conscious decision to try to help our administrators the most that we possibly could and try to find some outside services that would help us with the planning of safety. So what we did is we found two companies, VSWC Architects, who's done some work for us in the past with the Technology Center and the Media Center over at the high school. And then also a company called Protect Ed. And what those two companies did is they basically took the plans of our buildings. And they looked at several things. They looked at, they developed classroom seating. They looked at each of the rooms individually sized and figured out how to get the right amount of furniture into those areas to accommodate the amount of students with the amount of space that those students and staff did need. They looked at the cafeteria spacing to try to figure out how we were going to handle the cafeteria. Just as an example of how the situation has evolved over time. The original thought was that we would have the students eat in the classroom. That presented a, just a number of difficulties if we would have moved forward with that decision. So with that in mind, we decided that we did need to use that cafeteria space and potentially other spaces in the building that may be committed to food service during the day. That was one area that VSWC took a look at. We also took a look at PPE. We realized that we needed some help in that area as well, that it was a lot to put on our school nurse to try to figure out how to get that PPE developed for the entire district and to find the best pricing that we could. We also took a look at outdoor classroom design with the idea of how do we get students and staff a break during the day from being inside the four walls of a classroom? So we've got some design ideas for those. And then from our initial survey that we did, I believe back in June, where we asked about car riding versus bus riding. We had some notion that there would be a lot more car riders this year. And we had them develop an alternative car riding routes for us as well, so we could unload students. So those were the areas that we really wanted those teams to focus on. I know that's a lot of areas, but again, as this whole situation has evolved, we realize that, you know, when we solve one problem, we create five more. So with that in mind, just, we'll go through an overview of each of those areas. So from a furniture perspective, we really got kind of lucky as a district. We found that the real, really the only furniture we needed to purchase, in addition to what we already have, is we needed some extra tables at the primary school. Basically, over time, we have gone to sitting at tables, kind of in a community setting. And what we realized is that we could A, either switch back to desks. And if we ever go back to a normal situation after the COVID pandemic, we would be left with a lot of desks. Or we could try to figure out with the furniture we had down at that building and in addition of new furniture, how to arrange those classrooms to get the necessary spacing for those students. So we did realize that we would need some more tables down at that building. Those have been purchased and are on the way. We are also using dividers at that building in addition to other buildings. So those are in the works, the plexiglass barriers that you're familiar with. And that we're also putting dividers in the cafeteria, in all four cafeterias. So we've done, done a lot of work to get to that point. We've made some orders. We're getting some things in. And we are, we will be working on those until school starts.
Stuff in in time?
That is the goal right now, is that everything on this list will be in in time for school.
Okay.
First day.
That just-
The plastic barriers, how are you employing those?
Most of those will be sat on tables. They will divide the students. It will give them an opportunity to be in their own space. We are also putting those in the cafeteria. So those will create spaces, once those masks are off, that'll create another barrier between a student that will help stop the, sort of the community breathing of the aerosol particles. We are also looking at some dividers for, we've put dividers on all of our high-traffic areas, secretary desks, nurses' stations. There are also some teachers that have requested specific dividers for them. We were looking into those as well.
Some of those are already installed.
Okay, so the question I have, so at the primary school, you have these dividers between kids. Do they still have to wear masks?
Yes, they do, yes.
And Eddie, you've probably heard, read research on this. Because what I've read is that these dividers don't actually work because the air is circulated around anyways.
Well, I think that they, they add something, the mask is the key, the key, the key. But the biggest issue is going to be the cafeterias when they've got the mask down. And that's, so I'm very happy that y'all are putting dividers in there. That's really the only way to do that and to get adequate distance. The big issue will be, how are we going to clean the space between the multiple shifts coming into the cafeterias?
So we are in the process of working on that, Eddie. As I stated earlier, this is a fluid situation. And I've used the analogy of a pyramid, that we are sort of working from the tip of the pyramid down to the foundation of the pyramid. So as we work down that pyramid, we get to these specific questions, like how are we going to clean? And we are developing those ideas, right, you know, every day we talk about these things. And a lot of it's, the schedule specifically of cafeterias hinge on how many students are going to be in the buildings. So the administrators are making those determinations now to try to figure out how many, how many students the cafeteria will need to serve. Then we will come up with, how do we get the students into that area? And then we're working with Scarlet and Gray then on how they will clean those areas.
Okay, that was my question. We're obviously going to have to pay extra to have extra employees in the cafeteria from Scarlet and Gray to be nailing this in a 15-minute slot of turnover.
And actually, Scarlet and Gray has already presented an interesting idea to us, Eddie. Because we expect less activity in the evenings in some of these buildings, they are thinking it might be possible for them to bring in a, one of their second shift people in each building earlier to help, to help with those areas like that.
It does, you just, you gotta have enough bodies. I mean, literally, if you're talking that many surfaces, it takes time. And so, perfect. That's great. It sounds like y'all are really on top of it. I really am happy about that.
And not just bodies, Eddie, but making sure that, you know, that some of the cleaning tools that we need. For example, in the buses, one of the, since we know that that won't be a Scarlet and Gray-type area to clean, we're discussing on potential ways for the, for those to be easily cleaned that our bus drivers could do, or somebody from the transportation department could do. So those could, you know, based on how we decide, make that decision, those could affect some of the cost of this PPE as well. But the idea is to make sure we have everything we need to make sure everything gets cleaned and gets disinfected in a timely and efficient manner.
Yeah, sounds good. Yeah, the problem that you probably already completely on top of, I just want to say it, is many of these disinfectants require what's called dwell time. Many of them require to be allowed to dry. And most people don't know that, and they don't put the amount of time in that it takes to turn that over. So if you go and you spray a quad on and you wipe with that quad, which is a typical cleaner, that has to be allowed to dry, has to be allowed to dry. It does not work if it's not allowed to dry. Well, that's 10 minutes at least. So you got to plan for that. And I don't know exactly how you plan for it.
We are building that, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think one, one thing the administrators are doing is, you know, in normal lunch periods, we bring a whole group in, they finish, they all leave. In this scenario, we're looking more at having a rolling lunch, where you bring a group in, in an area. They, another group comes in 10 minutes after them. That first group leaves, it gives you time to get that area, give that dwell time. And then the next group leaves. So it's not like you've got to clean the whole cafeteria or space at one time.
Yeah, it's just, I watch in the hospital where people don't give dwell time on the chemicals. I watched in the hospital where they leave it wet for the next person. I watch in the hospital where they dry it off. So no, no, you can't do that. It's not how these chemicals work. So, great, sounds like you got a really good plan there. And I think you got a plan for 100% because it is my current desire and agreement that I thought we made with Community Orange we're in. So you got to be ready for 100% of students.
One of the things that Mick referenced, Eddie, which we'll come back to, obviously, as we're monitoring the county health levels and our plans throughout the year. And the reason why we have multiple plans is so that we can make a thoughtful shift. And part of our logistical planning that creates issues is with the all-in, five-day-a-week in-person, is how we continue to repurpose and use our furnishing with new barriers and dividers and to keep the largest amount of social distancing that we can because we know that in three of four of our buildings, the six feet is not possible throughout the entire school day. And of course, we all know that it's not possible on a bus. So we just have to be mindful of that as we're also looking at that. And right now, our current health orders from the county recommend that six feet. But as we see those trends in orange over the next couple of weeks, that's something we'll have to watch for. Any amendments or changes that we can, and then do the best job we can with the furnishings and the barriers and dividers we do have to ensure maximum social distancing.
Right, I agree. One last thing that you may or may not know, it's just an area of my research. None of the chemicals, not one of them approved in the United States of America, is approved for soft surfaces. So furniture, if you've got soft coverings on those, if it's vinyl, you're fine. If it's soft coverings, those cannot be disinfected. So they need to be pulled out of position, out of use. They should not be in use.
I think to another point that you made a few minutes ago that I would just reiterate. And again, we'll talk to people about this throughout the year. And our staff is already acutely aware as, when we talk about minimizing contact and touch surfaces and cleaning our media centers and how we utilize them and including books coming and going from our media centers is going to be much, much different this school year than people can imagine. And it will take some time for people to wrap their heads around that notion, especially when it comes to the typical idea of signing in and signing out books for children. It's just not going to be the same.
And I think to your point, Eddie, what was great about the architect is they gave us layouts for the classrooms. And if your materials weren't in that layout, like potentially a reading couch or something like that, those pieces of furniture are no longer going to be in there.
Sounds like y'all are doing a really good job. I'm sorry, I just think there are things that I think a lot of people miss because we're not, we're not all supposed to be experts in this shit. This is not what you learn when you decided to become a principal, now a super, or a director, so.
So to your point, Eddie, my question is, are we bringing someone in to train the teachers to help teach the kids how to, and even the teachers, how to conduct themselves in this new environment?
In terms of the cleaning, Scarlet and Gray has always, has already kind of worked up a plan for us where they're going to help to educate our staff members. And they're willing to do some presenting, which I think is going to help our staff feel much more comfortable explaining the tools they use and how they go about doing some things. And then what types of cleaning can be done throughout the day to mitigate issues. And in terms of the other visual cues and signage and things that we're putting in place for physical spacing, we have already actually begun to model that. And a lot of it is verbal coaching and physical modeling and coaching. When we, we got our leadership team together last week, you know, we were all practicing, giving some verbal and visual cues. Mick will probably refer a little more to this as we move forward. But the consultants are working with us on signage packages and all sorts of visual cues that will allow us to reinforce and teach how people should move through a building.
And in addition, Protect Ed, which is the company that has been helping us with the PPE, they have some training modules as well that they can help with that. Our school nurses will help in this training as well on, you know, how to, how to put the masks on, making sure everything is in place. And just like Kirk mentioned, signage will be important. That was the next area I was going to cover. We have looked at the, the plans for our buildings and tried to figure out what the most essential places are to put signs. And then also, as we've done this, it has evolved into figuring out what the, not just our hallways and classrooms, but looking at outdoor spaces and signage for those. not just our hallways and classrooms, but looking at outdoor spaces and signage for those. Um, thinking about if, if, if we're going to use Tomahawk Stadium this year or, um, the, uh, the soccer field, how we're going to put signage in those areas. If the volleyball team is going to compete these, this year. Um, signage for the gyms for, um, it, it potential outside of Indian Hill for students for, uh, for other teams, et cetera. So that was, that was sort of the next step we're looking at. Um, we should have those, those items in or a bulk of those items in on Friday of this week. So we can start getting those, um, installed in the buildings. Uh, most of those will be stickers, um, that will go down on floors, on walls, um, on hard outside surfaces. Um, we've also looked at the buses on what kind of signage we need in those, but that is also one of something else that is evolving over time as we get more information from the state and the county health department on how those buses can be utilized. Um, so we are looking at signage as well. Um, of course, the next step is PPE. Uh, what we did there is we took, um, all of our buildings, all of our different areas, departments and did a sort of wish list of what we would like. And then we combined that with recommendations from Protect Ed to make sure that we're getting everything we need, things that we're not necessarily thinking of. Um, to cover all of our PPE needs and then to also order, um, any type of machines that we need. Uh, for example, we've talked about electrostatic sprayers for each of the buses um, to help get those cleaned in a, in a, in a timely fashion. So that first order will be placed this week. Protect Ed can deliver everything, uh, quickly. Uh, they have warehouses here in Cincinnati that we can have, uh, items delivered, um, almost as we order them. So we feel pretty good that, uh, we're covered in the PPE area as well. Um, in addition to that, we've talked about outdoor classroom space. Um, that, those areas have been designed and each building has two or three spaces um, that, that sort of have target areas for outdoor classroom spaces. Um, we've looked at the idea of putting up sails, um, which can be a semi-permanent, um, solution as opposed to renting tents or, uh, renting an item. Um, so, uh, then in addition to the sail, we would put down in areas that are on grass.
Putting up sails?
They're called sails. If you think of a sail on a boat, this is essentially the same thing. Would be attached to a building on one side or a tree on one side.
Okay.
Then our semi-permanent structures then, that the students could go out, uh, and, and learn in outdoor spaces.
Great, sorry, I just never heard that term.
Yeah, it was first for me too, Eddie. So, um, so we're getting some, some great ideas that we didn't think of. Um, in addition to the same.
Putting that same idea at the high school years ago and we never did it for that courtyard, which is completely unusable because of the sun.
And that's one of the areas we're looking at now for outdoor spaces. So, uh, we would potentially see a sail in that area.
Just make sure it's safe. I don't need something blowing down and hurting a child. Just make sure it's mechanically installed correctly. That, I just don't want some jackleg putting something up that hurts a child. That's what the cost was, the huge problem when we looked at it before. Uh, if it's installed correctly, it ain't cheap.
Understood, yep. So, uh, in the area of air filtration, um, we were talking to a company called EAP. Um, they have suggested a fan filter unit. Um, these, uh, these units are commonly used in hospitals. Um, so that was actually sent to us on Friday. Um, we need to get back into a conversation, um, with that group and find out cost, uh, time of installation, um, future operating costs, things like that. But we are, we are investigating that. The music department has, uh, made some, some requests as well for, uh, air purifiers in their, their areas. Um, we've also looked.
I'm sorry, but I don't see any way in heck you can put a bunch of kids in there screaming basically and protect them from each other. Does anybody else see some grave issues with choir? I, I just, I, I can't see how you do that safely.
Well, to your point, one of the reasons that we are looking at the outdoor space use and, um, you know, we'll have modified capacity in our other venues. So for example, if the auditorium were reopened, you could imagine that it would be at less capacity and we would able to be, we would not be using uh, many of the seats, uh, that are closest to the stage, for example, during a performance. Um, but, uh, our teachers have done a great job of researching and working with national organizations on how to do this and modify classroom space and time. So outdoors, weather permitting, we have a lot of capability to continue to do, um, things like acquire class or, or modify performances. And indoors, uh, Mick and Jim and I are working with the companies now, um, to make sure that we are uh, subdividing a, a large classroom space so that they can do modified work with the students. Um, and looking at the barriers or dividers that they could use. It will be different though. And, um, our teachers are trying to be very creative with that. Not just with choir, but also with our instrumental, uh, music with horns. That's something we, we have to work on. And part of the, uh, PPE that we're looking at is covers for all of our horns, uh, to be able to use and clean throughout the year. Uh, we're also going to have to look at keeping instruments on campus logistically, uh, so that we don't have as much issue with transportation. So again, there'll be a lot of modifications this year for performing arts.
And then the final area we took a look at was transportation. Like I said earlier, in that first survey we did, um, there was a significant, um, number of parents who indicated that they would be interested or willing to bring their school, their children to school by, by car instead of bus. Um, one thing that does do is it would create an already, create an additional congestion issue to, to, to areas that are already very congested. So we did look at, uh, adding a second car drop-off line to each building. It would work, it seems to work fine with trans, with the busing and with the car ridership in all of the buildings except for the middle school. Um, if we did go to a second line at the middle school, there would be a significant cost as we would sort of have to restructure an island out there. However, we did notice in the last, uh, the last question for the parents, um, there doesn't seem to be, um, as, as much emphasis placed on car riding at this point. Um, we did see transportation, um, is sort of at the same percentage as it always has been for bus riders. So right now that, that plan is sort of in limbo. Um, but we do have that option should we see a rise in car riders during the school year.
I do wonder if we need to add a police officer, especially at the high school. It's a game of chicken, uh, there at the entrance on the reg. And I think maybe if we're going to be really bumping up, what do y'all think? I'm not saying that we need to do it. I'm asking for a conversation.
I reached out to the chief just yesterday, so I'm hoping to hear from him uh, to set some time where we can talk through some of the traffic patterns at all the schools. There are going to be some, some challenging points, whether you're looking at the primary elementary, there's just kind of some congested bottleneck points, um, or you're up here at the high school, middle school. We're gonna, we are gonna need some support from them.
Okay, good. Work, work on it.
So that was really all I had to present. Are there any questions or anything else that you would like to, uh, to talk about in the area of safety?
I just improving that air as best we can. I know it's not going to be perfect, but anything we can do to, to filter, clean, repurpose, bring more fresh air in, let's try to do it.
That's key.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Kirk, anything else to add?
No, I just think, uh, again, as we look at our, uh, different plans, uh, board members, we will continue to evaluate the layering of the safety and, um, we all know with our face covering policy, we've got a really good, uh, start there. Um, and the issue of social distance between Plan A and Plan B continues to be an issue that we just have to address with our planning. Um, and for both of those plans, these consultants have done an excellent job of giving us um, efficient feedback and, um, sourcing vendors that are local, regional, that we can work with quickly. Um, and over time, I would imagine that we're going to find new things as Mick, uh, said with his pyramid uh, metaphor. And, um, when we discover those new pieces and parts, we will add them to our list of to-dos to, to research them. And, uh, I'm very confident that with VSWC and, and Protect Ed, that we have, uh, really good partners in place uh, to help us and, um, look forward to, uh, getting these things ready. I think people will start to see visual cues going up around our campus over the coming week. Uh, and as our staff is returning, uh, we will continue to educate and train and work with them uh, to feel comfortable moving throughout these spaces. It's going to be an ongoing educational program this year for both adults and children, uh, as well as our visitors that ever come to campus to understand all of these things, um, and what's expected. Moving through a school building will be different than it was in the past. And, um, those are things we'll continue to work on with everyone.
Yeah.
The one question. Well, the one question I have comes to masks. And again, I've asked this before, are we supplying the masks? Or are the parents supplying the masks? What happens if a kid come, gets to the bus and doesn't have a mask? And are we, um, telling them what kind of masks are okay? Because from what I've read, cloth masks don't, aren't as efficient as, let's say, then ninety-five or other masks.
Our face covering policy does, uh, give a, um, complete message that community members should come to campus with a mask that has, uh, has been approved or, or meets certain specifications. And so we are asking everybody to honor that policy and to be educated about it and to bring their own face coverings. However, we are also planning to have face covering. So if we were to have a student who forgot a face covering or a staff member, uh, or someone in need, uh, who needed our assistance, those are things we're planning for. Um, however, the policy is, uh, again, a K-12 policy and we're asking all families to honor that policy.
Have you sent us a copy of that?
Uh, yes, and I can resend a copy.
Thanks, I'd like to see that.
Um, the, the biggest issue for us is kind of making our teachers comfortable. Uh, that's if I'm starting to look around the nation, schools that have opened or schools that are refused to open. It's all related to the teachers feeling comfortable in the buildings. Uh, and the, and the kids, but I think teachers are our biggest issue. So I, I think it sounds like y'all are doing a good job with trying to set all that up. But I think we need to really make sure that they're, they understand and see that we've done everything to protect them. Uh, that is possible to be done. Um, but, uh, yeah, cause I don't want to be that school that had the picture of the kids all moving through the building, no mask. And now they're actually shut down. They've actually gone virtual. So.
That's a good point, um, Dr. Hooker. And, uh, one of the things that, uh, Jim is working on is kind of a show and tell. And as we, we get our equipment in and as we're able to, um, bring staff together to literally, uh, show them and let them see what we're, we're putting in place and then have people get used to it. But we want everybody to have a comfort level and, uh, be as safe to the highest degree possible.
Yeah, and I, I think you also need to, it sounds like y'all have already addressed this, but just to say it, uh, we need to be able to make sure that we can move from an A to a B plan or B to an A plan, uh, quickly because, um, I think we're going to move to it. And so we need to be able to know where those desks go for a B and where they go for an A.
We will continue to work on that.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody, I think, uh, if there are no more questions, uh, we're probably coming up on the hour. Mick, did you have anything else?
I do not.
Thank you, Mick. Thank you, Kirk. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, have a great day.
Bye.